Good afternoon and welcome to our Cobb County Board of Commissioners work session. This is August 27, 2024. I'm pleased that we have two presentations with us today. The first one will be to receive information with respect to our American Rescue Plan Act funding, and the second one will be to receive an update regarding our 2016 and 2022 SLOST program. I believe kicking off will be the ARPA funding, and heading that discussion is our deputy county manager, Jimmy Geese.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Commissioners, Madam Academy Manager. We are extremely pleased today to bring you an update on the ARPA program. We're so pleased we've actually brought in some of the sub recipients to speak with you this afternoon to tell you about the good work that's going on in our communities. Today, we have representatives from Communities and Schools of Georgia, Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center, Center for Family Resources, the Salvation Army, the Tommy Nova Center, YMCA, and also Zion Keepers.
Excellent.
So each one of those nonprofits will have about five to seven minutes to talk to you about the programs that are being funded with the ARPA funds. However, first off, I'd like to introduce to you two of our program managers with Deloitte, Damon Armini and Christina Capello, who are down from up north, one in Virginia, one in Philadelphia, so they can answer any detailed questions you may have about compliance or guidance or treasury, treasury guidance. But first of all, Mr. Bill Vogtman will give you a brief update on the financial analytics where we are.
Great, thank you, Jimmy.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager. And I promise we have just two slides for you on the financial piece, but just wanted to give you a summary and a little bit of a breakdown of how our ARPA grant is progressing. We broke these down into major categories: county infrastructure, support services, community health, public safety, economic development, consulting, and compliance. And then we also have added a new line item for de-obligation contingency. These are monies that were previously allocated to nonprofits, and through the work with Deloitte and our compliance team have decided they could not spend the full amount, so we have returned some of those monies. Those monies do need to be reallocated out, which I know Jimmy Geese will be walking the halls with us, with you this next, this, this next year as we get ready for those to be allocated out. And we'll continue to be working closely with our nonprofit partners to make sure that we capture those and the monies are fully spent. But you can see the current budget is $159 million, and the reason that is above the original ARPA allocation is ARPA is allowed to earn interest, so we continue to grow this program as dollars are in the bank account waiting to be spent, and we continue to work with our partners to make sure we allocate those out. And then also, I gave, just the second column over is the spend as of August 6th. We have spent $80 million, so we're at fifty, just over 50% spend of the allocation. So we're progressing quite well. And then on the next slide, well, I want to just give you a second to look at these percentages. County infrastructure is by far the, the furthest as far as progressing on the spend at 56.1, and support services is at 42.3. And if the board would like a detailed list of the projects that make up these categories, we're happy to provide that as a handout to you all.
Okay. Very good, I believe we have a question already.
Just curious, thank you, you had mentioned the interest earned on this. Is that something, did I miss where that separated out, or?
So it is part of the allocation process. So what we've done with that is we, we are, we have transferred that initially to grow our capital funding. So a part of the agenda item we brought a couple of years ago was as that interest is earned, it is transferred into a capital reserve. Now, about a month ago, we brought a new agenda item to say we're going to stop that, and it's going to stay within the ARPA fund to make sure we're fully funding the compliance and any contingencies that we need to do. So that is kind of how we work at that number, and to give you an idea, that is roughly about $12 million of interest earned.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this slide? No, very good. Okay, and this is just a graphical representation of kind of the same thing. The, the graph on the left is the ARPA budget allocation and then the spend. These are pretty much in line with how we walk through these, so when you kind of walk through these individually, you'll notice that the, the largest bucket of this is county infrastructure at a 33.6% allocation, and they are at a 37.6% spend. So they're, they're moving along right as we would expect. And then the next section of, next large section that you see there is 16.1, which is community health projects is what they were allocated, and they're at a 10% spend. So we are working through those. The community health project, one of the big ones, as you know, is the South Cobb Health Center, so that has yet to kind of get going on the spend as they're still working on some fundraising, but the other projects are progressing very nicely. There's, and we have worked with Deloitte to make sure we reach out to anybody who's underperforming on their spend to make sure we have a touch point, new budgets, and a new spend plan. So with that, does the board have any questions on this slide? Very good. All right, I'll turn it back to, please come on.
We will start off with our presentations. Communities and Schools starts out with the first one alphabetically, and then after that, they'll just file up as they see fit.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairlady Cupid, and Board. My name is Natalie Rotledge. I'm the Executive Director of Communities and Schools of Georgia and Marietta Cobb County. Our mission is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. And our vision is that through a powerful collaborative effort, students and families will receive the resources, inspiration, and opportunity to graduate from high school. Communities and Schools was founded on five basic beliefs. We believe that all children should have a one-to-one relationship with a caring adult, a safe place to learn and grow, a safe heal and healthy start with a healthy future, a marketable skill to use upon graduation, and a chance to give back to peers and community. For over 20 years, CIS has supported thousands of students and families in Cobb County with our wraparound services model by partnering with Marietta City Schools and Cobb County School District with a common goal of improving graduation rates. CIS places site coordinators in schools to implement our wraparound services model. It's like giving the school a great big hug and filling in the gaps. Site Coordinator Service hivers school social workers and school counselors, supporting at-risk students with individual student support, targeted programming, and college career enrichments. You can find CIS often managing food pantries, clothing closets, or making home visits to make, to support parents. In the beginning, we mostly supported high schools with our wraparound services model, and through the years, we became, we aware of the need that was evident, that CIS staff was needed in middle and elementary schools of these feeder patterns. By serving students in feeder patterns, CIS would have the chance to serve families, not just students, provide a long span of support for at-risk students, and build a stronger school community. Today, it is with immense gratitude that I share how impactful ARPA funding has been for communities and schools, and most importantly, the students and children of Cobb County. With your, your support, we have expanded to support the feeder patterns of elementary and middle schools of McKeachran, Osborne, Pebblebrook, and South Cobb High Schools. Last fall, a mom with five children arrived in a local shelter, enrolled her children in the school with a CIS staff person. Most of the elementary, most of the children were elementary age and had no consistent education experience due to transience and COVID restrictions. But by building trust and consistent care, collaborating with the school district and the shelter agency, the children started to thrive in school. The mom attained employment and transportation to eventually secure stable housing. Today, that family receives some resources, but they are well on their way to independence and stability. In another part of our community, a mom with elementary, middle, and high school age students were struggling, living in an extended stay. She was struggling to feed her children and seeking employment. Our CIS elementary and high school staff went to meet the mom and bring some groceries for the family. When the mom opened the door, one of the little girls hugged her mom's leg and said, "Look, I told you somebody would bring us food." Our team worked together to bring resources to this family, meeting their basic needs, partnered with another agency to bring the mom's support, and helped the children achieve academic success. Beyond student success, a goal of CIS is to help cultivate and foster strong communities. More than 10 years, CIS has served in the Osborne High School community, helping improve graduation rates. When we started, they were in the mid-30s, and now in the 98 percentile of, of students who attend all four years at Osborne High School graduate. Osborne is more than a school. It has cultivated a key, a community for all school levels. Thanks to your support, CIS staff has expanded beyond the high schools and serves in the meters, in the feeder middle schools. This past May, we supported the senior celebration night at Osborne for their seniors and families. They set tables around the track at the football field, had dinner, and, and celebrated their seniors. Children, students, and staff danced on the football field and raced to the end zone for fun. Each student was recognized on the 50-yard line. Parents decorated tables with photos and memorabilia, celebrating their child's success, and a Braves win-worthy fireworks show concluded the festivities. As the thunderous strike, strike, crack of fireworks echoed in the night, this event gave celebration of accomplishment to the seniors, but inspiration for graduation to the elementary and middle school students that were there. Beyond these stories, the data amplifies our success. 67% of our students improved their attendance in school. 81% of the students improved academically. 70% of the students improved their behavior, and 91% of our students achieved grade promotion and graduation. Graduation is important, is your first passport to prosperity. The steps to graduation don't begin your senior year. It begins as a five-year-old going to kindergarten. Each year, a child attains milestones for literacy, is given the opportunity to participate in high school activities, and inspired to graduate in high school, pursue a career that gives financial stability, a pathway to homeownership, and a healthy family cycle. Thanks to your support, communities and schools can hold the hand of that student when they stumble along and high-five them as they achieve all that they can be. Thank you.
Hey, don't go. Don't go, come back, come back. Go back to the mic. Claudia. Natalie, thank you. Thank you for sharing that information with us so we can get a sense of the powerful impact that these funds are having. I know I had some questions for you, but I just want to see if any Commissioners do as well. Do any Commissioners have any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. Hi Natalie. You're everywhere in the community, and we appreciate your dedication and commitment to our kids.
Thank you.
Good job.
Means so much, thank you.
No question, but just thank you. A lot of those schools that you named are in my district, so I really appreciate the support that you provided to the community.
Thank you.
Same.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to detail out each of the stories as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm gathering that the funding helped you primarily to expand into the feeder schools, into the high, into the high schools.
It is true, yes ma'am.
And I know that the impact may be immeasurable for a lot of the support you provide, which is academic but also wraparound support for students and families to help their academic success. There are some stats, though, that you did share, and I missed one. There were four stats. You had 67% improved attendance, 81% improved academic performance. I missed the third one.
70% of the students reduced their behavior incidences.
Reduced behavior incidences.
Which means going to ISS or OSS.
And this is for the students in both the feeder school and the high school?
All, all 14 schools we serve.
All 14 schools, okay. And then I have 91% had grade promotion and graduation. And there was something you said, I wanted to write it down because it sounded so good. You said that your diploma is your passport to prosperity.
Prosperity. It's the difference between a job and a career.
I love it. Thank you, that was very powerful.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We'll take our next presentation. You may begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. Thank you for inviting the Salvation Army Marietta Corps to update the Board of Commissioners on the progress of our ARPA subrecipientate agreement. My name is Carolyn Booth, and I am the Grant Manager for Public Funding with the Salvation Army of Metro Atlanta, which covers not only Cobb County but Douglas, Gwinnett, Fulton, DeKalb, and Clayton. With me today is Carolyn Gillyard. She's the Lead Caseworker at the Marietta Corps, who works on the project as well as supervises the case workers on the project. Our agreement started last February of 2023 for Cobb County residents struggling with COVID-related issues, including inflation that affects rising grocery costs, rising housing costs, and those that have now become homeless. I'm now on Slide 3, next page. So I'm not going to read the slide that is in front of you, word for word, but our agreement basically covers negative, negative economic impacts and provides assistance with rent for Cobb County residents to prevent homelessness, serves clients who are already homeless in Cobb County, the city of Marietta mainly, and helps clients with food insecurity through our food pantry. On Slide 4, I go into what our homeless service center is. It's open Monday through Friday, actually Monday through Thursday, 9 until noon. It's at our main office on Waterman Street, and it provides a hot breakfast, snacks, and encouraging words, shower, laundry facilities, comfort kits, and food bags. This program is for those who would otherwise not have access to basic human needs, but also impacts their lives in a positive manner. Through this center, we also provide the opportunity for these individuals to utilize other Salvation Army programs and services. Slide 5 is our food pantry. It's open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 1 until 3. We provide canned goods, breads, frozen meats when available, perishable items when we have them to our residents of Cobb County. Clients access the food pantry once every 30 days more if there's an emergency situation. Page, Slide 6. The main part of our ARPA funding was for financial emergency services. Our caseworkers are available Monday through Friday, 9 until 5, to help clients needing homeless prevention services from Cobb County. They can apply for rental assistance via our online portal, which is sahelp.org, or they can call our main line for information. Our rental assistance, of course, is contingent upon available funding, like the ARPA funding, and clients must meet eligibility requirements, FMR, and 50% AMI rates. Number 7, I'm sorry you guys can't see this, but I've got these beautiful little icons. Since we started this program, we have served over 16,000 individuals, and of those individuals, 133 of them are seniors. We have helped 78 people with rent assistance to prevent homelessness. We've served over 2,000 hot meals to those who are already homeless through our homeless service center. 15, over 15,000 clients have received 5,014 food pantry food boxes, which benefited 486 children. On Slide 8. Our, our clients identify, and 38 of our clients identified as veterans. We think that number is an undercount. We've done 490 loads of laundry for 84 homeless clients. Over 2,000 showers have been provided through our homeless service center, and 21-plus hygiene kits have been presented containing washcloths, toothbrush, toothpaste, hand wipes, and other items for our homeless. Slide 9. We have, through this program, expended over $135,000 in rental assistance paid directly to landlords to prevent Cobb County residents from becoming homeless. Over 544 children have been served through this program, and 505 items, material goods, have been distributed, including tarps, blankets, clothing, and other items to our homeless clients. How do we have such accurate data? Well, we utilize the HMIS Homeless Information System, known as Client Trac, and all of our clients that are in this project are enrolled into that portal, so we can pull our data daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, and annual, annually. And this system also allows us to keep track of our demographics of the clients that we're serving, which is the next slide, Slide 10. So the majority of who we're serving are women, with a smaller percentage of men, and the majority, 60%, are, identify as Black, African-American, or African. Of the total population served, 18.5% present themselves as Hispanic, Latin, O, A, or, or X. The next slide, page 11, shows you what our budget actually was for this program. We were awarded $330,000. The bulk of that, $200,000, was for direct client assistance, helping clients with their rent. We estimate that our spending is going to be complete by December 31, 2024. We are on track, we are 70% spent at this time. We would like to thank the Commissioners on behalf of all the Cobb County residents for this funding, which has kept families housed and fed while serving the hidden population in Cobb County, those who are currently homeless. If there is, and I heard there was, additional funding, the Salvation Army Marietta Corps would like to be considered to continue to help those in need. I'm now going to turn it over to Carolyn Gillyard to share two of our client's success stories.
Good afternoon. My name is Carolyn Gillyard. I am the Lead Caseworker with the Salvation Army, and I just want to thank you for the ARPA funds, because without those funds, a lot of our families will face homelessness. I would like to present two testimonials. The first one is a single woman who is 54. She was, she, she had a really good job. She, you know, her, her income was very consistent, but then she lost her job. So once we assisted her, this is the thank you we got. Hello, Ms. Carolyn. I want to say thank you for the work you and the Salvation Army did to prevent me from getting evicted from my rental home and paying my power bill. You may recall, I was laid off from my job of 24 years, August 2023. At the time of my layoff, I thought my savings and severance package would cover me until I found another job. Unfortunately, that was furthest from the truth. To my surprise, I was not able to get another job until March 2024, and the job that I got only paid me $20 an hour, which I was grateful for, but it was not enough to cover the bills that I created with a $39 an hour pay rate at my previous employer of 24 years. This shortage of income created great anxiety for me since my bills total approximately $5,000 a month. I appreciate the prayer one of your staff members prayed for me when I visited your office and the compassion you and the entire Salvation Army family showed me. Even though I'm not getting the same $39 an hour rate I had with my previous employer today, I am glad to say, since talking to you, I accepted another job paying $27 an hour with good benefits. I am trying to get through my current leads to downsides and live accordingly, according to my current income. Thank you again sincerely. The other testimonial is from a family of four, I'm sorry, a family of five. Good morning, Ms. Carolyn, how are you? I just want to let you know how much appreciative all that Salvation Army did for my family and me during the time of our struggles. Even though we are still struggling to keep our head above water, if it had not been for the, for the assistance that this program gave us, we could possibly, could have been homeless. As you know, with my husband being a traumatic brain injury survivor, and having two sons with autism, age 23 and, and 26, and a 15-year-old daughter, my life has been extremely challenging with, with financially providing for them all. When you are on any type of government assistance, there is a strain that is put on you to not make a certain amount of money to continue to be on that assistance. If you make anything over as little as a dollar, all assistance can be denied. This has been bondage for years and has led me to get the help I needed to survive. I appreciate all of you, especially this rental assistance program that has helped my family. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you sharing, yes. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? I just have one clarifying question. The three services, I did not know were here, right here in Marietta Square, and were these made possible because of the funding, or were they already in place and the funding helped to augment those?
They were already in place, and it allowed us to expand and grow.
Okay, so they will continue post-funding?
They will. We do have challenges with the Homeless Resource Center, yes, and the biggest need that we are seeing is for rental assistance, and without the support of funders like the Commissioners, we will not be able to help people with rental assistance because public funding has just shrunk.
Let me see that, thank you. And thank you for personalizing those stories. Yes, you do have one question or remark from Commissioner Brown?
Yes, the Salvation Army is also one of the best nonprofits too in our community. In the past, we've heard a lot about funding and salaries, but I've always heard that the Salvation Army, that like 90%, 99% went to the actual charities.
That is correct.
So if that's correct, which I'm assuming it is, that can, that's to be commendable, because we know where the money's going to help these folks, so thank you.
Yes, we would all, as employees, love to make more money, but we are here because we love the organization and love the mission. So most of our funding goes directly. I, I think your percentage is a little high. I think it's about 85, 90%. And the rest is operating.
Thank you, again.
Thank you.
Impactful work. We'll take the next presenter. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Monica Olivera. I'm the Director of Development at Tommy Nova Center. On behalf of our organization, we thank you for the opportunity to share with you today some of the positive impacts made on Cobb County residents with disabilities through the support of the Cobb ARPA grant. For over 47 years, Tommy Nova Center has remained honored to serve the Cobb County community by supporting and advocating for one of its most marginalized population of residents, individuals with disabilities. In the spirit of our mission, empowering people with employment, we have recognized and mobilized the capabilities of Cobb youth and adults with special needs, providing them with customized workforce development services so they can secure viable employment and become contributors in the community that they live in and love. Funds provided through the Cobb ARPA grant have been instrumental, not only in the provision of services, but in the expansion and the enhancement of vital education, training, and employment programming, to ensure that an already at-risk population did not fall further victim to detriment, isolation, and hardship as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. On the contrary, Cobb residents and families with disabilities continue to overcome and to thrive with assistance from innovative offerings that have been made possible through Cobb ARPA dollars. Our organization's capacity to expand and evolve to meet the post-COVID workforce development needs of Cobb residents with disabilities has also benefited from this support, allowing us to leverage additional dollars to further fund our services. In 2022, the Community Health Assessment Report published for Cobb and Douglas Counties provided direct feedback from stakeholders with disabilities. Identified environmental weaknesses reported by residents included a lack of support for students K through 12 with disabilities, the need for post-secondary and career transition programs, extensive wait times to acquire services and resources, and a general lack of awareness around disabilities that exacerbated stigmas and feelings of isolation. I am proud to say that Cobb ARPA funds have supported Tommy Nova Center's efforts to successfully address and alleviate these identified challenges over life of the grant through its support of direct services staff and non-staff resources. To date, Cobb ARPA has helped fund and serve over 800 individuals and family members living with disabilities. We're strongly positioned to meet our initial projected service goal through the Cobb ARPA grant of 1,250 Cobb residents. In July 2023, we established the Academy, which is a 12-month accelerated vocational training program for young adults with disabilities who have completed high school and are looking ahead to the next chapter. ahead to the next chapter. Individual cohorts comprised of 15 students each received customized, comprehensive work readiness education, hands-on training, and placement into internships and employment. We are currently serving our fourth cohort of adults with disabilities, and to date, 62 program participants have received ongoing services and supports, with many already in jobs. Cobb ARPA funds helped fund the establishment and execution of this program. We've also built collaborative employment partnerships with local businesses and provided them with a pipeline of trained and motivated talent to fuel economic growth. Our Connect program offers a centralized location for parent support, resource connection, and relationship building for youth and families with disabilities, which happens right here in Cobb County. Meeting monthly, our goal is to build social connectedness between students and families who attend programs. The students can also develop social skills, build friendships, and have fun in a safe environment. With the support from Cobb ARPA funding, nearly 400 individuals have participated and connect with the past year. And on a personal note, as a parent of a student with special needs, I can't tell you how much this program means to the families in this community. Our Early Youth Employment Services Program provides in-school classroom instruction and robust summer and school break programs for students with disabilities. IAS has partnered with 17 Cobb County schools, delivering services within the classrooms during the academic year. Cobb ARPA's support has helped IAS serve almost 500 students with disabilities across 31 classrooms, as well as through onsite summer camp and school break programs, which Cobb ARPA funds have helped establish as well. This provides a continuum of care during out-of-school time for youth and families. Outside of these statistics, there are stories that move, inspire, and generate hope for a more inclusive community. Stories like Tommy, fittingly, our first accepted participant in the Academy in honor of Tommy Nobis. He longs for a career in technology, and his autism diagnosis sometimes creates comprehension barriers, but he has great intelligence, drive, perseverance, and attention to detail that make him an ideal candidate for this field. While in the Academy, he was placed into a web design apprenticeship with Click IT right here in Marietta, and he continues to thrive there. Then there's Cameron, who struggled with years of misdiagnosis and feeling unaccepted by his peers as he transitioned from state to state and school to school. Once his family settled here in Georgia, his school referred him to Tommy Nobis Center, where he became an active participant in the IAS program, and after high school, was accepted into the Academy. In less than one year, Cameron was hired and is now working in the Cobb County School District. Last is Jenna, a student with cerebral palsy that participated in our IAS summer camp program just this past year. Jenna has limited mobility and relies on a wheelchair. And although she was initially apprehensive and shy, she blossomed with confidence and with the ability to advocate for herself over the program. Through career exploration activities that Cobb ARPA funds helped support, she has chosen to pursue a career in the public library system as a media specialist. While the effects and impact of the Cobb ARPA grant are significant, Tommy Nobis Center recognizes our work is far from done. As of July 2024, the CDC reported that 2.2 million adults in Georgia have a disability, which is roughly 1 in 4 residents. Looking ahead at the future of our community, the Georgia Department of Education reports there are 234,000 students with disabilities enrolled in schools across the state. And in Cobb County alone, there are 15,000 students enrolled in Cobb schools who have at least one diagnosed disability, diagnosed. There are others who have not been diagnosed yet. The youth of today are certainly the workforce of tomorrow, and the residents that will keep the health and sustainability of Cobb County alive and flourishing. It's imperative that we continue to equip them with the foundational skills needed to thrive for years to come. We sincerely thank the Board of Commissioners for this invaluable support, allowing us to propel our service offerings to new heights and ensure that Cobb residents and families receive the equitable education and employment opportunities that they deserve and they desire. We would also like to thank the Cobb ARPA staff and Deloitte for their ongoing guidance and partnership. Thank you so much.
No, thank you so much. Really appreciate you sharing the impact of these dollars on the many families and students that you're serving. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
Tommy Nobis is a great one, too. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll take the next presenter. No, I don't. I'll get it. Good afternoon.
I'm Kristy Duhon, the Finance and Grants Manager at SafePath Children's Advocacy Center, and I have with me Jessica Bersian Ruiz, who is one of SafePath's clinical therapists. We're here to talk to you today about SafePath's mental health enhancement projects supported by Cobb ARPA. I'll talk to you about SafePath, the work we do, and how, and our Cobb ARPA project. And then I'll turn it over to Jessica to give us a firsthand account of one of the families that she has served on this project. So we brought you each a project-specific handout and a copy of SafePath 2023 Annual Impact Report, so let's get started. SafePath's mission is to reduce trauma to children and families by offering a comprehensive, child-friendly, and professional approach to allegations of child abuse. For over 30 years, SafePath has worked in Cobb County through the multidisciplinary team process. SafePath partners with all law enforcement agencies, so that includes all of the city jurisdictions, and then unincorporated Cobb, so the Cobb County Police and the Cobb County Sheriff's Office. We also work with the GBI and FBI on occasion. In addition, we work with the Department of Children and Families and the District Attorney's Office throughout the intervention, investigation, treatment, and prosecution of child abuse cases. SafePath serves child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, neglect, human trafficking, child pornography, and witnesses to domestic violence and homicide here in Cobb County. When a child discloses abuse, SafePath is the first place they go. SafePath has a dedicated team of forensic interviewers, child and family advocates, and clinical therapists. Additionally, through a partnership with WellStar Health Systems, SafePath has a nurse practitioner onsite, so we're able to provide medical exams and, you know, while the family's still at the center, which removes another barrier to care. All of SafePath's services are free of charge. SafePath serves children and families in all four of Cobb's districts. Additionally, for this project, we have started tracking households in qualified census tracts, and we regularly serve households in 10 out of 15 of those qualified census tracts in Cobb County. These households tend to be disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. They tend to be lower-income, and they tend to be racial and ethnic minorities. SafePath is the only children's advocacy center in Cobb County, and we are fully accredited on the national and state level. A few years ago, SafePath recognized that there was a need for expanded services to Hispanic and Latino families here in Cobb County. Cobb County has the second-highest population of Latinos in the state of Georgia. Both of the school systems in Georgia have higher percentages of Latino youth versus the statewide average. Statewide average is 15%. Marietta City Schools' population comprised of 37% Latino students, and then the Cobb County School District is comprised of 25% Latin students. These numbers are reflected in the amount of Hispanic and Latino youth that are served by SafePath annually. Research and best practice tells us that children and families respond better, they are more compliant in treatment plans, they have an easier time navigating the criminal justice system, when they are receiving culturally competent services in their native language. ARPA funding from Cobb County has been instrumental in helping SafePath sustain both a full-time Spanish-speaking forensic interviewer and a full-time Spanish-speaking clinical therapist. We have already begun to see the impact of this. If you refer to the backside of that handout, you'll see a little bar graph. So SafePath is proud to say, since we have started reporting on the quarterly KPIs, that we have provided over 600 counseling hours to Latino children and families in Cobb County. This would not be possible without community support, so we thank you so much. We are excited to see how this project continues to grow and the impact that it will continue to make here in Cobb County. So now I'm going to turn it over to Jessica, and she's going to share with us a little bit about what she does at SafePath and the impact it's made.
Okay, very good. Hello.
Hi.
I'm Jessica.
Hi, Jessica.
I am a bilingual therapist at SafePath. And with a consistently full caseload, I am able to provide with, oh, excuse me, I'm able to work with and provide clinical services to at least 10 Latin families at a time, in addition to assisting with translating for any Spanish-speaking families that come into the center and conduct forensic interviews in Spanish when needed. When thinking about all the different people that benefit from our bilingual services, many families come to mind. One family in particular includes a sixth-grade girl who suffered from sexual abuse at the hands of a trusted family friend. This girl was 11 years old at the time. She was the youngest of two, and her family and herself immigrated from Venezuela two years prior after facing severe economic struggles due to their country's declining economy. She reported her abuse at school, and she was brought to SafePath for a forensic interview that was conducted completely in Spanish. She disclosed enduring chronic sexual abuse for approximately a year and a half by a teenage boy from her trusted church community, with the most recent incident happening the day before her interview. I was able to provide clinical services to both the child and her family entirely in Spanish. The child struggled with regret of reporting her abuse after experiencing backlash from her church community. Throughout our sessions together, I worked with the child in processing her trauma, as well as with the family as a whole in restoring trust after suffering from an unthinkable incident in a place and a country they believed to be safe and trustworthy. I also worked with the family and the child in becoming more familiar and accustomed to a new culture. This family, as well as all of the families I work with, I have mentioned how appreciative they've been to be given the opportunity to receive services throughout SafePath in their native language. The sense of peace and acceptance that families have shared to have while going through a very challenging time in their lives is unmeasurable. Being able to process their trauma without worry of not only being understood, but also heard by people who have experience and expertise in working with populations suffering from similar struggles as their own is extremely beneficial. On top of being able to communicate effectively and efficiently, families also don't have to worry about their cultures or their values being explained or understood. Other first-generation children have also found comfort and security in sharing their stories and their struggles to a professional who has similar experiences as their own. Being able to witness the impact of having culturally competent services to Latino families is so very rewarding, and playing a part of that has been an honor.
Wow, very good.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you. Just curious, after hearing that, how does this program continue, this outreach effort to the Latino population?
So all of our cases are referred to us through law enforcement and the Department of Children and Family Services. We do have a couple of community outreach people on staff, and so we do participate also in the Cobb Safety Village Family Fund Days. They have specific Spanish-speaking family fund days, and so we're out there giving out materials in Spanish to let them know about our services.
Okay, good. And the funding that's going to enhance that outreach, I anticipate we will continue to have that enhanced outreach post-ARPA funding?
Yes, that is our goal. So I think funding is a struggle for every nonprofit. Our greatest funder used to be the Victims of Crime Assistance Act, and that has been cut on the federal level, so we have been working to, you know...
What funding source was that?
It's the Victims of Crime Assistance, and in Georgia here, it's managed by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council.
Okay.
So, yes. So we have been trying to fill the gap in every which way, but this program is so important to us that we will continue these services no matter what.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments? Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, SafePath has been around a long time and does a great job with our DA's office, our police, and court cases and all, and as well as what you're applying for here with the outreach. But you forgot to mention one of your greatest assets, Glenda.
Glenda, yes. We do love Glenda. For those of you who don't know, Glenda is our service animal. She is a golden retriever, and she works in our clinical therapy department, and we love Glenda.
She is.
Yes.
We all love her.
Employee of the month every month, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Melanie Kagan. I'm with the Center for Family Resources here in Cobb County. So we have actually been serving Cobb County since 1960, so we celebrated 64 years of service to our community, located mostly in Marietta, but most of our services actually touch every district in our county. Our mission is to reduce childhood homelessness by serving and empowering families through prevention, crisis intervention, housing support, education, and compassionate case management. We have a variety of services. We do everything from prevention, including our food pantry, all the way to shelter and housing services for families with minor children in the home. We were lucky enough to actually receive several different ARPA grants to support programs that we have in place. So I'll touch a little bit on all of them. The first one I want to talk about is our short-term housing program. One of the biggest things that we see in Cobb County as a service provider for families who are experiencing homelessness is that accessing some of the funding that is available for them requires them to actually have a lease in their name. Once a family has an eviction on their record, has poor credit, all of the things that come with living in poverty or having things impact them, it can be very challenging for us to get them housed with a lease. What that means is that they're usually homeless, living in a car or living somewhere relatively unsafe while they wait for that process or wait for someone who will take a chance on them. So our short-term housing program has become more and more critical. It's basically our version of shelter. Because we work with families with children, we shy away from congregate shelter. It serves a purpose. We have must, and they're wonderful at it. But our families tend to not be very comfortable in a congregate setting, especially when you have to take your children down to eat with, you know, a line of homeless adults. And so our shelter has become very critical to filling the gap of identifying those who are homeless and then actually getting them permanently housed. We do it in apartments that we lease ourselves. So short-term housing is apartments. We have 11 units. The ARPA grant helped us sustain that increase. We had five, we went to eight, and now we have 11. And those units are in various properties. We work with four different properties across the county, and it allows us to put people in for 30 to 60 days, depending on their circumstances. Still not always enough time to solve the problems they come with, but usually enough time for us to find a suitable alternative for what their next step might be. So that program, the ARPA funds actually helped support about 60% of the costs associated with just the shelter itself. So that is incredibly helpful for those 11 units. We don't get a discount, so we're paying market rates the same that anybody else would on most of those units. We do have a good partnership that we just developed with a church that is actually giving us access to two units for free moving forward, so we are able to expand that as well. So through that program alone, in the last year, we served 32 households. Remember, they stay roughly two months, or a month and a half to two months. So it was 32 households total. It was 42 adults and 65 children that came through that program. And that program has been a longstanding program. The ARPA funds were just helpful in getting us to be able to expand, and then we'll continue to maintain that expansion. Oh goodness, I'm sorry, I read you the wrong information. 64 households, sorry, 64 households and 115 children was our short-term housing program. The other program that the ARPA funds helped with was our rental assistance, which was really just a kind of a continuation of some of the rental assistance we helped with, with the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. That was a very small amount. It was only $60,000 for rental assistance through ARPA. We chose to let that kind of linger over time. We could have expended it in two months easily, but we wanted to have some safety net funds available for people coming to us for prevention. So we actually chose to let that out a little at a time so that we weren't saying no, I don't know, you say no either upfront or you say no later. So really, there's not a good way to make that work. But we have found that if we have at least a little bit every month to offer, it helps us sustain some of the families that we're seeing come to us for prevention in particular. So that program was 32 households, 107 people altogether with the 65 children. They averaged about $1,800 in rental assistance, so you're talking about a month and probably a utility bill in most cases. All of them had to work with our case manager to ensure that our assistance was actually going to keep them stably housed and that they weren't going to end up in the same position the next month. If they needed to work with our workforce team, we would refer them there as well. We have a collaborative partnership with Cobb Works, so our case manager is actually employed through Cobb Works. We pay for her time through our grants, and she sees our clients first and then moves on to help with whatever Cobb Works needs after that. Most of our families in housing programs do meet with those case managers and... and to date, our average income increase for families that work with that case manager is $1,700 a month to their base income. So, that has been a very positive thing. The other one that we're very excited about that the ARPA grant helped us do finally after about 25 years of wanting to do it was a conversion of our food pantry to a choice pantry. In our programs, what we really design to do is to give our families dignity and hope. Most of them come to us at the lowest point in their life, and they all have children in tow, and so it's a very tough situation for them. We try to offer them the ability to make choices and to have some decision in the process, because that is one of the things that we find that empowers them faster to kind of reclaim some of the things they lose when they lose housing, when they lose employment, and they are having to ask for help. So, the Choice Pantry conversion was a conversion of our food pantry, which was really just a, like, warehouse in the back of our office where we had food available. We would build a box for somebody or get bags when somebody called or came to our office, and we would just hand them a bag. And it was, we tried to make it as convenient as we could as a variety of what we had, but it was just what we had. And I just always know, you know, if you have ever had children, they are not the easiest to feed. They're usually pretty picky. So, if you are a family that's already struggling, trying to tell your child that the only thing they can have for dinner is the box of food that somebody gave you because that's all you can do, it's pretty demoralizing as a parent. And so, we like our families to be able to have choice. So, the Choice Pantry allowed us to do that. So, the ARPA grant paid for us to have refrigerators and freezers installed that are glass-stored like a grocery store. We found used grocery store shelving that we were able to put in. We leveraged this to work with some of our partners and got a grant to finish floors and put a kids' corner in with the Junior League of Marietta. And so, it's set up like a little grocery store. It's got a point system, and it's got all of the MyPlate. If you've ever looked on the USDA website, they use MyPlate for the categories of food. Everything is sorted in that. We've worked with the Atlanta Community Food Bank as well, and then they have recipes. A lot of families who are living on either government assistance or who are really struggling to pay for food end up with a lot of processed food. Processed food is cheaper. It's a lot of quick meals. They don't know how to cook sometimes with fresh ingredients. Our Choice Pantry conversion allows us to have fresh produce on hand at all times. We have frozen meats, frozen fruits, frozen vegetables. We have dairy products, eggs, milk, and cheese, and that's a partnership with an agency called Porch that helps sustain that for us every month. And so, our families come in and shop like they were at a grocery store, and the kids can play in the kids' corner. They have a little buggy. They can go with mom and dad. Our volunteers walk with them and help talk to them about better choices. They talk to them about how to hide vegetables into a meal for your children, how to work with fresh fruits or fresh vegetables that they haven't always been able to work with. And so, it also allows them to get things like flowers and sugars and oils and cake mixes that they wouldn't always have access to. So, it gives them a little bit of dignity to go home and actually cook for themselves and cook for their family. So, that has been a great, a great partnership, and we're so happy for that ARPA grant. We have not expended the full thing, mostly because we've had such an increase in donations in food. We haven't had to spend the food budget as fast as we thought, but that's great because we can sustain it. It will get spent, I assure you, and it won't be a problem. But it's, it has been a big difference, and we've had a lot of tours of people who've come in to see it because it's a really great model to use for, for clients. So, I just, thank you guys so much. We have, we've expended two of the four grants, and the other two will be expended soon. So, we're happy that we were able to help you with that and happy to help with any of the reallocations as well. But like I said, we've been serving the community for years, and so this has allowed us to enhance some things, but it will be sustained as we move forward from here.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your continued partnership with the county. And having you here, I know we see you at different moments for different reasons, but I think it's always good to get an update to learn of just the sheer challenge it is to have a limited amount of resources and to meet a growing need. So, appreciate you being here today.
Commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions?
No, just want to share that, just appreciate everything that you do in the community and also the educational component with your food pantry. That's a positive, so that's a really good thing that you guys are doing there. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Do we have any other presenters here today?
Good afternoon. I'm Gail Battersby, and I'm with the McCluskey's Cobb YMCA. I cannot tell you how excited I was when I got that invitation to come here. And it was because, yes, yes, because I could thank every one of you in person for what you've done with allowing us and trusting us with a grant so that we could feed our people in Cobb County. So, on behalf of all the families that I get to serve, thank you. And I've done it in person because I've tagged you guys on a lot of things on our Facebook because I want the community to know the impact, what we can do with help. So, I was asked to say, what is the impact of this grant? So, let me share with you. We purchased a refrigerated van, game changer. This allows us to buy protein, eggs, milk, and meat, and more fresh produce for our families. We, in 2023, we served over a million 3,000 pounds of food to our families. Year-to-date, in 2004, we've served over 800,000 pounds. We serve between 850 and 1,000 families per week, not per month, per week. So, what locations are we in, you ask? We're at Brumby Elementary on Terrell Mill we're serving today. We serve on Tuesdays there. The Church of Green Acres at 591 Pat Mel Road, and we serve on Thursdays. Both of these are drive-throughs because we do over 300 families in about an hour and a half. On Wednesdays, we're at Dwell and Elevate, which are on Franklin Road. And on Fridays, we are at Fairground in Allgood. We do Hillcrest and Clifton Ridge. The ones at Clifton Ridge are all of our apartments. We do Choice Pantry. So, we buy fruits and veggies from Concrete Jungle, supplement canned goods with the Atlanta Community Food Bank and more. I'll share with you later. And we put that out on about six to eight tables, and they're able to come through. In fall of 2023, we added one more school because we heard from a teacher the babies were hungry. One of our board members heard that, and she said, "Not in our county." So, we opened a food pantry at Sawyer Road in fall of 2023. We serve about 250 families per month there, but the principal was kind, and she allowed us to have an indoor pantry off the library. So, now the social worker, anytime a family says they're hungry, they get to go shop. We partnered with Marietta City Schools this summer so that all of our kids could have lunches every day. We also partnered with Cobb Collaborative so that all the children we serve at the apartments had a reading program. We conducted three health fairs at the Green Acres Fair Oaks Community. We partnered with Cobb and Douglas Health to provide vaccines and health resources. Each health fair, we made sure there was a Y mobile market. And June of 2024, we had our first community extravaganza, and we provided community resources, clothes, toys, fresh produce, and most of all, fun for the families of Fair Oaks and Green Acres. In July of 2023 and 2024, we did a backpack, a back-to-school bash, providing 325 backpacks, again, a Y fresh produce market. And not only did we do that, we partnered with Mount Paran North Church. We served over 700 hot dogs, icies, and popcorns to all the families. But what we, what we're good at is we love to partner. And so, we wanted to extend our reach and help strengthen the families, not just provide food. So, we've partnered with Cobb and Marietta City Schools, Cobb Collaborative, Mount Paran North, Porch Marietta, Cobb and Douglas Health, National Charity League, Faith Lutheran Church, Sojourn Church, the Church of Green Acres, Public Scooter, Concrete Jungle, Atlanta Community Food Bank, Yells, and Surfamilia, and I'm sure I've forgotten quite a few. The families we serve have become our friends. The impact on, on that in my life and our volunteers have been life-changing. Each week at our apartment mobile markets, we provide food, clothes, and books. Our friends share their needs, and our volunteers or the Y tries to find them resources, whether it's where to get vaccines so their children can enter school, how to register for school, or where to find beds for their kids, and the list goes on. I have to share with you, our volunteers are amazing. We could not continue this program without them. We provide over 50 volunteer opportunities a week for the residents of Cobb County. So, what is the impact on our families? Friendships, health and community resources, food, clothing, books? This saves our families money so they have a little bit extra to pay for rent, gas, medical bills, and living expenses. The impact of this program, thanks to this grant, is so much more than just food. Our goal with the Y Hunger Relief Program is to strengthen our communities, fight hunger, and bring hope, love, friendship to all we have the privilege of serving. Now, Lisa, I'm going to quote you. As Chairwoman Lisa Cupid said in February 2023, "This grant will be transformational. It has in my life and those we've had the privilege to serve." Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for your passion, thank you for your service, and thank you for bringing it home that this money is impacting not just programs, but real people, changing real people's lives. And this is what we intended to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Means a lot.
Yes, Commissioner Burrow?
First of all, I can attest to what the YMCA does, the McCluskey Y, because I've served on the board there for three years in the past. And they're lucky to have Gail. She left and came back, and they did great work. And thank you for all you do in the community.
You're welcome. It's my honor.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you so much again.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, we'll take our next presenter.
After all those presentations, I need to go. I'm sitting there saying to myself, "Oh, my God. Wow, all these people, all they're doing." But anyway, it is my privilege to be here this afternoon. My name is Ada Wickena. I am the Program Director for Zion Keepers Incorporated. A little over five years ago, Zion Keepers was giving a building, the old Red Cross building behind DFAX. So, we've been there, like, over five years. And the mission of Zion Keepers is to provide permanent supportive housing and transitional housing to homeless, chronic male veterans. But then COVID hit, and it was just two of us, Ms. Veronica and myself. And so, we could still come to work. We were at one bubble during COVID. And all the restaurants were closed. Everywhere was closed. Well, we would be there, and people passing would come to the office, knock on the door, we'll come out with our masks and the thing over your head, and they'll be like, "Ma'am, you got food?" First day, second day, third day, Ms. Veronica, I said, "I think we need to provide food for these people." She would cook in her house, and one day, the next day, I would cook, and we'll bring it there. While we're doing that feeding, whoever, because people would go to DFAX for whatever reason, but DFAX was closed. So, on their way out of DFAX, they would see cars on our premises and come in and would be like, "Okay, so, those people, yeah, they're closed, but they will ask for food or whatever," and we're providing. Then, I, I went to a meeting somewhere, online, virtual meeting, and the folks over at Moss Ministries said, "Oh, they had food from Delta Airlines that they couldn't dispose of, and it was going to go bad at some point if anybody wanted." We're like, "Sure, we'll take." So, I went over there, collected the breakfast sandwiches and stuff like that. I had a freezer in my home that was small, so I brought it to the office so we could load those things in there. So, that's how we got involved in giving our food. It wasn't, still isn't the mission statement for Zion Keepers, but that's, we do that. So, when the Cobb ARPA grant, I overheard about, I overheard it somewhere as well. So, I'm like, "What's that?" We went online, did the application, which was a funny kind of process. We weren't sure what we were doing. We'd be like, "Is this what they expect us to do?" Long story short, we got the grant to provide direct assistance for rental and utility assistance and also for food. And since we got that grant, I can assure you, it has definitely made a difference. If I start telling the stories, the success stories, I'm sure you all will be like, "Ms. Wickena, you need to go." But anyway, in the one year that we've been working the grant, the ARPA grant, we have served over 20,000 meals. We have been able to save, at least this last June, yeah, June, we were able to save six families from eviction. They were at the point of being evicted. And the other TIBRA funding does not pay arrears, but this fund pays arrears. And because we could pay the arrears, they were saved from eviction. And you know how it is during summer? Kids are always hungry. When they are bored, they are hungry. When they don't want to go out to play, they are hungry. So, it's always, "Mommy, mommy, I'm hungry, hungry, hungry." So, what we did, we did a survey. We sent out a form to parents to say, "What kind of foods do your children need during summer? Because they're not getting lunch, they're not getting breakfast at school. What kind of foods?" And they gave us a list of foods that children would like. So, we went grocery shopping. And during that time, for the month of July, 41 families received groceries for their kids during the summertime. And because we are not there on Saturdays, we also made snack packs of things that the children would like, that the moms told us they would be able to make for themselves, noodle, stuff like that, if you have kids here. So, this is what we have done with the Cobb ARPA fund. And I must say, we are really, really very grateful to be included in the organizations, the big ones, you know, you know when you're a little fish in the big pond here. So, we're really privileged to be part of this pool for spending the ARPA fund. It has made a tremendous difference to the lives of those that we are serving and still will be serving. We are able to have, we have saved some from being homeless. And because the fund helps to pay for rent, we have been able to provide housing for Ms. Wilhelmina. We also got her a job. Because we are over close to Food Depot, we have a relationship with them, and we always tell them, "Ma'am, if you need..." tell them, ma'am, if you need help, if you're hiring, let us know first before you advertise. So we've been able to get some of our people working over at Home Depot till date. The funding we have to provide housing for veterans is for a limited number. So, but the Cobb Appa Fund has been able to help us house other veterans who would have fallen through the cracks because the funding we already have for transitional housing would not accommodate them. So, but with this funding, we are able to put them in housing and pay their rent. And we're working closely with the Cobb Connecting Veterans, helping them to go through the process of getting their DD 214, helping them to get their act together, locate their social workers who have probably, for whatever reason, they don't know where they are anymore. So we've been able to do that, and it's with this fund that the Cobb Appa Fund, and honestly, it's a lifesaver, I must say that. It is a lifesaver. So thank you very much, the Board of Commissioners, for allowing us to be part of that group. And we look forward to the excess money, I don't know, we look forward to getting part of it as well? If it's going around, yes, we'll be able to spend it. We don't have much operating costs. If they were going to do a presentation, or I've been able to read something on my computer and put it on the board, but they said, oh, bring hard copies. I'm like, I don't have enough paper to make copies of slides and things like that. We simply don't have that kind of money to do that. So I'm like, okay, I'll just speak from my heart about what we're doing and where we're going. So thank you very much and for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time and service to our community. Please give Veronica my regards. I know she's been out here doing the work for quite some time, and appreciate the particular niche that's there in serving our homeless male veteran population, our chronically homeless. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Just saying, great job in the community, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Commissioners, that's seven of the ninety. Now, put into context what you've just heard from those seven and multiply it times thirteen. That is the tremendous work's going on in our communities. You know, in our conversations with our consultants at Deloitte, there's a lot of communities that will throw their ARPA funds at one or two projects. But the way we have been able to select those nonprofits, select those, I guess, administration assistance companies, it has really made an impact on our community. We hope to be able to come back to you in the future and let you hear some more good testimonials. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our team, because the folks at Deloitte do a lot, but myself, Bill Volkman, and Debbie Blair kind of serve as the head of our internal ARPA team. Of course, Shannon runs the show. And of course, Ross helps us with all of our website information to make sure that we are being very transparent with how that money's being spent. So we'll be glad to answer any questions you've got before we tie bow around this one.
I want to say thank you to you and also to our team from Deloitte. Thank you. I had received some data with respect to the programs, and I said, I see the numbers, but I'm not sure what this is telling me. I need to understand the true impact of the work that's being done. And we toyed around with how we could do this because we didn't want to be onerous to those who were doing the work, but we felt it was important to relay to the community what work was being done, because we did not receive a small amount of money to recover from the pandemic, and it was important to show the true value that was being returned to Cobb County by this endeavor. Today was all that I was looking for and more. I truly have been touched by what I've learned about your selfless commitment to our community and what you've been able to do with these dollars, and our public has been able to do the same, so that we know that this money was being well-spent to be able to help move our community forward. So thank you so much. Thank you for the work that you're doing and also your willingness to be here today. Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Damon, as well. Thank you, Bill, for your ongoing work. And of course, thank you, Shannon. When I think Jimmy, I got to thank Shannon in the end.
She's got it under control.
All right, very good.
Our second item today is to give you an update on the sixteen and twenty-two SPOLOST program.
Yes, why don't we take a quick five-minute break?
Sure.
Yeah, before we go into the SPOLOST program. Yep, thank you. Welcome back to our Cobb County Board of Commissioners Work Session this August 27th of 2024. We are now at our second presentation, which is to receive an update regarding the 2016 and 2022 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Programs. And I'll turn things over to our Deputy County Manager, Jimmy Gacy.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. Our second item today is to bring you up to speed, so to speak. This was a practice that we did several years ago, where we would come periodically and give you an update on the SPOLOST projects that were underway and the timeframe for those projects. We kind of got away with it after COVID and with other items that were placed on the work session agenda, but we're hoping to bring this back and do it about every six months. Today, you will hear from property management, public safety, and our Department of Transportation. And then we'll come back maybe in February or March and let you hear from ITS, Parks, and then DOT again, since they are, this is a very heavy transportation SPOLOST. But to kick us off, my partner in crime, Mr. Volkman, will come up and give you a run-through of the financials where we are.
Good afternoon again, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. This is going to look very similar to the Board of Commissioners Retreat. We gave you a little bit of an update then, want to give you some updated numbers as we walk through these. But the 2016 SPOLOST, this slide breaks down the revenues. The reason I want to show you the revenues is we get so focused on the expenses, you know, what projects are we putting out? But the reason that these are important is to show you a 2016 SPOLOST, which we've, again, fully collected our sales tax. But the departments have been able to leverage those dollars to an additional $198 million of other revenue sources that go in to fund SPOLOST projects. DOT alone brought in $120 million of grant revenue to assist their DOT SPOLOST programs. So these are significant as we walk through, and we'll show you something similar in 2022 as how that is beginning to build. But 2016 SPOLOST, again, sales tax were done, and we continue to bring in revenues to date to continue to fund these projects. Okay, so just a quick update on the expenditures. We did break out the remaining departments that have dollars left. You'll see that $53 million is left to be spent. That is less than 5% of the budget. So the departments are very much progressing along these projects, and we know some of these linger as we have some legal issues possibly tied to some of the ones that will continue to run the course. But again, less than 5% of the budget for the 2016 SPOLOST is remaining. Any questions on this slide here and breakout? Yes, Commissioner?
Is that calculated once all the projects on the sixteen Tier One are completed?
These are Tier One 2016 SPOLOST projects, and this is what is remaining in those projects. So we grouped all of DOT's remaining projects together. They have $24 million left to spend in Tier One projects. And then same as we walk down these. So there will be, there will be no additional Tier Two projects unless there's additional monies that were to come in, whether grant or otherwise, to address those. But 100% of the dollars that have been collected have been allocated to these projects, and the $53 million that's here is what's remaining to be spent on those projects.
Right, but it's designated.
It is absolutely designated. Yes, yes, Commissioner.
It's just not finished.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
That was my point, because I know we've already done revenue above for sixteen and can't tap into any of that.
Absolutely. And a lot of these, especially for DOT, and Drew may touch on these as well, but they're going to be those larger buckets, whether it be roadway improvements or things like that. So they are designated, to your point. Yes, Commissioner? You're welcome. Okay. All right, moving on to 2022. This is very early in the program, but one of the things that we've seen is we took a very conservative approach, because when we were getting ready to adopt this, we had a projected increase in sales tax collections. COVID happened, we weren't sure how, what that would get, what was going, that impact would have on sales tax. It had a, no, no negative impact. Actually, sales tax continued to grow during COVID. So we are trending strong. And one of the other parts of this is, again, to show you those other revenue categories. Again, as we walk through these, you're going to see that we already have $31 million of grant revenue received. Interest earnings is over 13.9. So that is part of what we do in finance in our treasury team. We invest those dollars to get you more dollars for these SPOLOST programs. And we work with the departments on how that spend looks. So again, as we walk through this, we're trending very strongly. And to kind of give you an idea, we are budgeting roughly $12.5 million per month in collections, and we are averaging, on the 12-month rolling average, just over 18 million in collections. And on the 24-month rolling average, 17.7. Now, those numbers are important, because we always want the 12-month to be higher than the 24. That means we're still trending in a positive. So a couple of months ago, we actually saw it reverse, but there was a correction in that, and we worked through that, and we're seeing it back on track where we wanted to go. I mean, it was pretty much break even a couple of months ago, but we've seen that rebound and continue to come back to that strong side again. So those are, those are going very well. And I know Jimmy's going to talk about the RAP schedule when we get to that. Just one more slide, and again, same breakout on the major shares of remaining dollars to be spent. To give you an idea, just to kind of think back to the 2016 budget, that was $1.17 million budget. The budget that we have before we allocate additional revenues and any RAP on the 2022 is $838 million. So that budget will continue to grow over the life of this SPOLOST program. But again, very early in the stages, and you can see DOT was the lion's share of the allocation, and you can see they have 194 million remaining. Next largest category is the cities, and then the Department of Public Safety, and then we work through Parks all the way down to Senior Services with their remaining of 278, 79,000. But to show you what kind of progress we're making here, we have expensed or encumbered 51% of the budget to date, this early in the program. And with that, you have 235 projects with activity underway, and there's only 93 projects to date that have no activity. So they are definitely progressing, and I know the department heads that follow me will go through some of their projects, but I just want to give you a little update on the numbers and see if you have any questions before I turn it back to Mr. Gacy.
No, we're just ripping through this, though. I mean, this is a six-year SPOLOST program, and it looks like we're at 50%, a bit over 50% of the money's being utilized.
Yes.
We have certainly been conservative in our estimates, which is reasonable, because I think we were planning for this. It was in the middle of COVID, but certainly all of our expectations have been surpassed with the amount of spending that's taken place that's generated the dollars towards this program.
Do we know what percentage are over budget? All of them? As far as maybe categories like... like libraries, parks, DOT?
We've not started that process. I'm going to go through a proposed schedule with the board here in just a second, and then we'll go back to that question. How about that?
Okay. And we'll get these slides?
Yes, ma'am. I think. If you don't, we'll give them to you. Of course, we are not allowed to allocate the revenue above projection until we actually hit the $750 million threshold. Based on current projections, we should hit that amount in August of next year. So before we throw the chum in the water, so to speak, with our departments, we felt like it was very important to come to the Board of Commissioners, to get the schedule in front of you, let you look at it. I can have a meeting, a follow-up meeting with you to actually adjust this. What we're proposing is to run the RAP requests submittals concurrent with the FY '26 capital and operating budget process. That will kick off this November with the departments actually having to have their FY '26 budgets in by mid-December. The reason we looked at doing this is because they're already in the process of putting together not just their operating budget, but their capital budget as well. So they need to make a decision whether they're going to be doing capital projects or SPOSS projects. And it makes it a whole lot easier for them to do it all at one time. Funds can only be requested for projects and categories included in the 22 SPOSS. It can't just be a willy-nilly project. It has to be a project that was identified in the program. We would give them a deadline to have their SPOSS requests, I mean, their RAP requests in by January 31st of next year. And then we would have a series of meetings with you as commissioners concerning projects in your districts and the chair countywide, and then also with departments before we actually put a recommendation together. Now, obviously, this program will go through December 31 of '27. That would be the end of the 22 SPOSS. We can't do the final RAP allocation until the program closes out. So what we're proposing to do is to do about 40% of what we think the delta's going to be, the 100 to 150 million dollar mark, and then have to come back with a RAP two, just like we did for the 16. We did a RAP one when we had a pretty good idea of what it was going to be, but then you have to wait until the program closes out to do RAP two. So around the 100 to $150, 100 to $150 million process during RAP one. And then, of course, the board would approve the RAP allocations once that threshold is met, which would be August, September of next year. So that's a proposed schedule. Shoot holes in it. Tell me what you like, what you don't like.
I look forward to that chum being thrown in the water. That's where there are new opportunities.
We have some shark-like department managers that want to go for it. So we have to keep them at bay before we get them going. So, but we'll be talking more about this with you. We've got some time, but we just wanted to give you something to look at on a sheet of paper. Like I said, it is proposed, but it can be shifted one way or another. So, all right, this time-
You do have one.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Can you go back a slide?
I guess I can't.
Well, Brad can.
Brad can.
No, one more, one more over. No, the other way. That one. Okay, never mind. I'll ask you later, Jimmy, when I get this.
They don't trust me with stuff like this, Commissioner. All right, so to begin our presentation this afternoon, Andrew Yakimovich with Property Management will go through his projects, followed by Adam Story with Public Safety, and then Drew will bring up the-
Don't go, Jimmy. One more.
No, I mean, you asked about the schedule. I think it's conservative and prudent enough with the resources.
Absolutely.
And it seems consistent with the last time around, so if it's not broken.
It is. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is the facilities portion of the SPOSS update from Property Management. So Property Management's SPOSS workload is unique in that most of our projects are completed on behalf of other departments and are listed in various sections of the SPOSS booklet. Some of our 2016 SPOSS projects, Public Safety Precinct Six, Sheriff's Office Headquarters renovation, Gritters Library, Cabinet Shop for Property Management, 2022 SPOSS, we have the firing range, E911 call center, we're looking for property or building for that, Animal Services Facility, we just hired an architect for that, Lyman Davis and Dooley, and we're doing some programming on that, Fire Station 12, and then we have library renovations, senior services renovations, and the public health facility in South Cobb, we're looking at how much property acres they need to transfer. And then Property Management was given $10.1 million of those funds, and we're looking to provide an emergency generator for the medical examiner facility. And we're replacing a roof at the East Cobb Government Center. And then we're going to replace the roof at Powder Springs Station before we do the community development renovation there. Precinct Six contractor was Bass and Cook Construction with Croft. It was 5.5 million. We've completed the project, and it's move-in ready. Sheriff's Office Headquarters, Carol Daniels is a contractor with CPL Architects. We're in design right now for the entire building, $24 million budget. We hope to start construction in January. It'll be us, doing floor by floor, it'll just take a little bit longer than a normal project. Gritters Library, Bass and Cook with McMillan Pazdin Smith, 9.8 million. We've completed that. We're just waiting on the rest of the furniture to come in in September.
Looking good.
Cabinet Shop Facility, we have, our old location was next to Elections, so we moved out of there. We renovated it for Elections for our warehouse space, and we just moved into this facility across from McCollum Field.
Yeah.
And we are using it.
If only you had a before and after, people will understand the applause.
It was-
Great, great.
And going over to the Elections Warehouse, it looks beautiful there. We would have been happy to stay with that. Firing Range, Catamount Constructors with Piper O'Brien Hair, this is addition to the Training Center, 23 million budget. We have an agenda item this evening for the final GMP for that project. And with the approval of that, we look to start on the construction of the actual building in October and be completed by next October. Fire Station 12 with Spratlin &amp; Sun with Croft Architects. Project budget is 6 million. We're waiting on the final GMP in the next couple of days on that. So it is in design. The site has been cleared. Existing buildings have been removed. So library renovations, there was $3.8 million provided. We completed LA Ray Library renovation. I have some pictures on the next slide. Strat Library is the next one we're working on. The biggest portion of that, we're going to do the exterior facade of that and get rid of that brown siding that's on there now, make it look a lot better and modern. And these are some pictures of LA Ray having a children's room there, and we have computer stations there and a meeting room and adult reading section. So a small building, but we put a lot into it. It looks really good. And Senior Center renovations, SPOSS funds, there was $578,000. We finished the Senior Wellness Center. The picture on the left is the cabinetry that our Cabinet Shop made in the new facility they have. And then the picture on the right is the main entrance coming in. So there's new automatic sliding doors, which they like, brand-new furniture. I'm going to replace the carpeting throughout, painted, new lighting and all of that, just updated it. In the Cabinet Shop, the check-in desk at the front, they were able to rebuild that, too. So with that, I know I went quick, but if anybody has any questions?
Any questions?
No, just, um, I don't mean to correct you, but Precinct Six is not move-in ready. They're still waiting on some equipment and furniture inside. So I get questions from the public in that area all the time of, when is it going to open? When is it going to open? And I want to get their hopes up because it's probably going to be November before it's ready.
Yeah, it'd be the additional buildout of the area in the back. That's correct.
Right. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all that you and your team do. We know that the number of requests are like this. The amount of time and resources are limited, but there's a lot of work and improvement going on all throughout the county, and we couldn't do this without the magnificent support of your well-able team. Does some tremendous work, particularly on our cabinetry.
Thank you. And we're ready for any RAP funds available?
I'm sure you are. We should have a RAP contest. You have to, to get the funds. That's your point of entry.
I think that's already started, the contest.
Make it fun, no, a different kind of RAP, you know? A lyrical RAP contest for these RAP funds. Be creative.
Good afternoon. I'm Division Chief Adam Story, and I'm presenting on behalf of Director Register. So for the Department of Public Safety, items that were not covered by Andrew, we're going to go over those very quickly. The first slide shows the one remaining project for 2016, which is Station 29. This is known as the Unicorn Station. We've been under contract for the property at Cumberland Mall for quite some time, and we're just waiting for the two legal teams to figure out the final pieces so we can get going on this fire station. So this is the look of the station. It's going to fit in very well in that area, and that is the proposed site plan. Croft and Associates did the bridging documents, and we're ready to go as soon as, soon as we're cleared with the property. Here's the 22 items. The first, Andrew covered the facilities for animal control and 911. The rest is 800 megahertz towers. They're still in the planning phases for those. And the radio placement for 911 is 90% complete. These are the radios that go inside of the apparatus. And that was done by Diversified Electronics. Then the police vehicles, there's a, they're all state contract. They're about 20, 78% complete of $10 million, and you can see the different variety of vehicles from Tahos, Explorers, to motorcycles. And the fire training grounds, this is one of the two projects for the 22 SPOSS. Property Management is managing Fire Station 12, and we're managing the Training Center just for the nature of the buildings that are being constructed out there, being training props. So our last slide is video from KSU and Captain Ben Holly.
We officially broke ground on the 2022 SPOSS project here at Cobb Training in the fall of '23. The funds that we're receiving from this SPOSS project are going directly back into our training facility. We have around $18 million that was allocated to us in this particular SPOSS project. This project is going to allow us to build an additional burn building. It's a two-story on a partial basement concrete structure that allows us to burn in every room. We're building a five-story tower that has a walkable roof, and every floor in that tower is a different floor plan. We're also constructing new confined space props for our technical rescue people. So the advantages I see that this SPOSS project is going to provide to not only us within Cobb Fire, but all Cobb Fire recruits that we hire on, is just the variety. Any training facility you go to within the metro Atlanta area, if not the southeast, is going to be very limited on the props that they have and the structures that they're able to train. The variety of training props that we're now going to have for not only our new hire recruits as we bring them through our Recruit Academy, but also for our incumbent firefighters out in the field, to give them something different to train on is really going to be beneficial for all of our people. So if people are interested in learning more about the SPOSS project that we have going on here with Cobb Fire, you can go to cobbcounty.org, and then under the Board of Commissioners tab, there is a tab down at the very bottom that's highlighted SPOSS, and it'll give you all the information you need to know about what project we have going on here.
That was a video. KSU has a program with DPS. They've produced several different videos, and that was one of their videos. So just want to add that into the presentation. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? It's amazing to see that campus grow and transform over time.
So we expect it to be finished the 1st of February, completely finished out there. So we'll definitely invite y'all out there to take a look. It's going to, it's nothing like in the southeast like. It'll look very much like a college campus.
Best in class. We talked about expect the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present on DOT projects. Fire makes it tough to follow with that video, but we will, we will do our best. Currently, Cobb County, Cobb DOT has 121 active projects in some stage of delivery between pre-construction and construction, and we appreciate the chance to highlight just a few of those. We won't go into all 121 for the sake of your time today. This, this first is actually just our cover slide, but a project worth noting is our Calaway Road project that is there by Jim R. Miller. That is prefab bridge that has just gone in. That project's doing, doing really well, and it should be complete on time this fall. Backing up, Bill gave some information about the 2016 and 2022 SPOSS. We have fortunately closed the 05 SPOSS. The 11 is still open. There are four projects remaining within that program, so do want to highlight those just very briefly. The first two are transit center projects that are currently going through the site location and concept phases currently. The Cumberland Transit Center, we are actively working with FDA and coordinating with them on that location. We do have $1.6 million in grant funding. And then the Marietta Transit Center, you see a larger number there. The majority of both of these are from, from grants on the Marietta Transit Center. That grant amount is from ARC and then a combination of the ATL and Georgia Department of Transportation. And we are currently finalizing the locally preferred alternative so that we're able to close out those two projects. The primary project that will hold open the 2011 SPOSS, however, is the Lower Roswell Road construction project that has begun. Right now, the contractor is working on a lot of that pre-construction activity of survey, pot-hauling for utilities. There's a large gas line that runs along Johnson Ferry Road that will need to be relocated as a part of this project, erosion control. So it's a lot of that preliminary work before they can really begin in earnest. But that one, we do anticipate being complete within the two-year project timeframe. The other project there, Powder Springs Road at Hawkins Road, is a much smaller standard signal rebuild project that should be complete here soon next year. Any questions on the 2011 program, or we will move into the 2016?
I just have a quick question on the Powder Springs slide. Is that a partnership with the city of Powder Springs, or does that fall solely on us?
This one is not. This is a county maintain, maintain traffic signal from time to time just due to the heat and the weather of that technology. There are really computers out in, in field conditions. We have a program through SPOSS where we're able to rebuild those traffic signals over time when they come end of life. So this is a standard traffic signal rebuild. In the 2016 program, we're about 92% complete, nine projects in design, 15 in construction. And we do have a couple of projects that we do want to highlight. A common question that we get is, why do DOT and transportation projects take so long? And I think these two projects help to demonstrate a little bit of that. Bill talked about the grant revenue that we're able to bring down, and that is an incredible opportunity to bring additional funding to Cobb County for transportation improvements. But with that does come the requirements to go through the state and federal process. DOT is what's considered a LAPP certified organization, and the LAPP stands for Locally Administered Projects. And that just means that, that our staff has been through the five required trainings put on by the Georgia Department of Transportation that allow us to manage those federal funds in compliance with just a couple of, of the things that come from the federal government, including Title VI, the ADA requirements, environmental, how-to-do procurement. So that, it is very process-oriented. There have been local governments that have had to pay back money to GDOT and to the feds for not following these processes. So it is very important, and it is something that we take very seriously to make sure that we can continue to show our partners at the state, at ARC, at ATL, at GDOT, Federal Highway, Federal Transit, that we are administering the federal funds, state funds appropriately. But with that local delivery does be, does come- But with that local delivery does be, does come GDOT's schedule. And the first one I'll highlight here is the Dallas Highway at Mars Hill-Loss Mountain Road intersection. This is one of the, the top bottleneck locations within the county. What this project proposes is, right now Mars Hill and Lost Mountain has just a single through lane and a single left turn lane on each of the northbound and southbound approaches. It winds it out into a four-lane approach through the intersection, allowing more north-south throughput there. This is a primary connection in, in the western part of the county between Macklin and Cobb Parkway. And in doing so frees up a little bit of traffic signal time for Dallas Highway. When we look at traffic signal timing, it is very much a pie. And so anytime we're able to allocate less time to the side streets, we can allocate more time to the main line. So this improves both north-south and east-west connectivity at this, this bottleneck. Approximate cost for about $11 million. And some of the tasks that we have been going through are pavement evaluation, archaeology, ear and noise, ecology. Each of these processes includes a study that has to go through the appropriate office at GDOT. They then respond with comments, oftentimes which then takes response back. Additionally, the right-of-way funds, the pre-construction funds are each set aside in specific state fiscal years. And so we are not able to open up those funds until we get to that fiscal year. Those are the two primary reasons. It's those, those studies. And then when we do get to the, the right-of-way portion of it, that, that right-of-way then has to be certified by GDOT in terms of how we go through those right-of-way negotiations. So it is very process-driven and based on those, those state timeframes. We do anticipate being able to go into construction, not next year, but in 2026. This next project is very exciting and a partnership with the National Park Service. This is a congested area of Old 41 where Stilesboro and Kennesaw Avenue come in. On a beautiful Saturday, I anticipate on Saturday that this area will be overwhelmed with pedestrians. The county actually built many years ago an overflow parking on the left side of your, of the screen here for the National Park Service to help to manage the, the load of, of just popularity of this, this park. But then what happens is that pedestrian traffic comes down and crosses at grade across Stilesboro to get to the main visitor center at the, the battlefield. This project both addresses that pedestrian safety condition as well as the congestion along Old 41 and building two roundabouts to address the safety and operations of the vehicular traffic. And then that light yellow line that comes across on the bottom of the page is actually an underpass would provide pedestrians an opportunity to, to cross grade separated from traffic in, in an area where there's actually a keep, keep moving lane so that free-flow lane is no longer in conflict with the pedestrians. It is the same environmental and archaeology constraints that, that we have with the previous project. The additional constraint on this project is working through the National Park Service and swapping land in an area that has a lot of history and a lot of importance to the community. So it, it does take time and, and a number of different reviews, but, but that one is anticipated to go into construction in 2027. Projects that are in construction do have two to highlight here. We have 15 in total in construction from the 2016 SPOST. First one to highlight is the Chattahoochee River Trail Phase 1. Very excited about this generational effort to connect the Chattahoochee through and beyond the county. The notice received for this project was in 2023, is a demonstration of the Chattahoochee Riverlands vision. And it is very much a design. Phase 2 is in, is in design. A couple of the pictures from that project, you'll notice on the right is an area for, will be an area for bicycles to use. We have some cobblestone pavers that separate that area from the pedestrian area and, and separate the, the traffic. And then on the, on the right, we have a, a picture of the boardwalk. This project's about 80% complete. They are currently working on finalizing the concrete work, the cobblestone and the landscaping. And we will coordinate with the board on a ribbon cutting for this project.
These are actual pictures, right?
These are actual pictures, yes ma'am. These are, these are not renderings.
Beautiful.
Next project to highlight is the South Barrett Reliever Phase 3. This is a multi-phase project that has been in the works for, for many, many years. C.W. Matthews is working on that currently. This is, to date, the largest construction project that DOT has ever let. We are scheduled for completion next summer. When complete, we anticipate about 20% of traffic will come off of Barrett Parkway onto the South Barrett Reliever. From where it says end of project, they're just north of the, the Home Depot between 75 and 575. Someone will be able to get from that point all the way to Cobb Parkway without being on Barrett Parkway. So very much a reliever project. Very excited about that congestion relief there. A couple of project pictures. If you've been on 75, it's, it's hard to miss this project. We have completed the deck pore, about 1,000 cubic yards on the deck. They are currently working on the barrier walls for that bridge, grading on both sides of the interstate. All of the walls are in construction. And Robert, Robert's court is scheduled for a traffic shift here coming up, but will, will have no, no impact other than just the, the lane alignments. Moving to the 2022, let me pause there. Any questions on our 2016 programs and projects? Moving to the 2022 SPOST, I did want to note a slight change in terms of the makeup of projects that you may have noticed through, through our agenda items, but we took a moment to step back and look a little bit at the comparison between the 11, the 16, and the, the 22 program. In the, the 2011 program, we were about 60% system improvements. These are widenings and roundabouts and sidewalks and trails and things like that. Additional or modified and enhanced transportation facilities, about 40 syst, 40% preservation. That's resurfacing, bridge replacements, that kind of thing. In the 2016, it was 70/30 improvements versus preservation. In the 2022 SPOST, it's 30% improvements, 70% preservation. So in the, the projects that you've seen us present every two weeks, you've seen a lot of drainage projects, a lot of bridge, a lot of resurfacing projects, and that is just the makeup of the program being more system preservation than, than system improvement. Currently have 66 projects in pre-construction and 27 projects in construction. We will obviously not go through all of these, but a number of projects that our staff is, is managing and doing a great job with. First project to highlight, we are used to talking about linear projects in the field. This one does relate to the DOT facilities. We thank the, the board and the voters for allowing us an opportunity to improve our facilities on County Services Parkway. Many of the buildings there are older, 20 to 50 years, metal buildings that are, are, have been overgrown and just in need of, of replacement. In particular, our Signal and Sign Shop has had poor collaboration space and warehousing space, and the facilities have not kept up with the technology and infrastructure that we utilize today. And before we, we move forward with exactly where we would place that Signal and Sign Shop, because a lot of the, the maintenance facilities out there, the pole barns that we, we store equipment in, has just been placed where there's available land. Let's throw it over here. We tried to take a step back to look at our site, to, to understand how it could all work together, understanding future facility needs and space needs on, on our campus. And actually, the red building there is where the Signal and Sign Shop is proposed. So it's proposed to go from the back of our property up towards County Services. A few of the renderings that we've been able to work on in partnership with property, and they should have an agenda item here actually next month to be able to finalize the bid documents and get this one into construction sometime next year. Providing much better space for our signal technicians to be able to, to have that test space and, and warehousing space for, for their equipment and then our sign shop. That, that is usually one of the hits of Cobb 101, where they actually make the signs there onsite. Have, have better space for them as well. Moving to Church Road, Plant Atkinson Road, this, this project moved forward with a PIOH, a Public Information Open House, in May. Currently, this intersection experiences substandard site distance based on some of the vertical geometry at the intersection as well as poor levels of service during afternoon, in particular afternoon peak hours. This particular solution would be a, a roundabout, and we anticipate just in 2028, when the project opens, that it would result in a 71% savings, delay savings. And then if we fast forward that through the lifespan of the project, we, if we look at a, a 20-year lifespan on the project, we anticipate a 91% delay savings at this, at this intersection.
Delay savings. So that's the, you're lessening the amount of time that people are waiting there.
That's right. That's right. This next project, very excited about, is our, our largest congressionally-directed spending project. We've, we've had great success working with our federal delegation to bring federal funds to the county now that earmarks have been reopened by Congress. This one is a $5 million partnership with the, the, the feds through, through the CDS to, to improve this intersection. Currently, in particular, westbound traffic on Schallaford Road, one lane continues through, one lane drops onto Johnson Ferry, which results in folks either intentionally or unintentionally getting trapped there and then having to weave over. So both an operational and a safety improvement, just reworking some of the lanes through there. All of the, the congressionally-directed spending grants, though, do have very specific and stringent time requirements. They must be completed by, by a certain date. And so this one is actually going through a design-build process to be able to expedite delivery and have that construction scheduled in that 2027, 2028 in order to meet those, those needs. And then finally, our 2022 SPOST projects in construction. You'll notice here, again, what I mentioned earlier, the, the last eight are all resurfacing projects, a number of pole replacements and drainage projects throughout. First one to highlight actually came, came up within the last couple of months over on Cooper's Creek off of South Cobb Drive. This project was not on our radar, but to, to walk through the damage, this is the, the most extensive damage that I've seen from a drainage collapse. On the left was a gazebo. That's a normal-sized gazebo that had dropped into the hole. The middle picture is actually a vehicle that the force of water came up and actually flipped that vehicle over into the creek. The, the trash can is, is sitting there on top of it, and then on the right is some of the rehab work that is ongoing. We anticipate that project to be complete within the next two weeks. But just as I mentioned, this is not a project that was on our radar until it failed spectacularly like it did. We are replacing the existing pipe. We are spin casting it to the outlet, replacing some of the headwalls and started the backfill and, and should be complete again here in the next couple of weeks. And then from a component standpoint, because many of the projects do come up like that one, we, we do look at it on a component level. We, we are thankful that the board has allowed us to actually shift some money from resurfacing into the drainage component to be able to address projects like this. Unfortunately, given the, the age of our infrastructure, we're in this phase of we're end-of-life coriated metal pipe, and both our funding and our contractor capacity has just not allowed us to keep up. And so while, while we have increased that to, to our current budget of, of that 22 million in total, if we project out our current spend, we do anticipate forecasting expenditures through the end of 2028 to $40 million. So it is, it is a significant expense. Moving into our, I'm sorry, moving into our next component is our sidewalks. While this does show, and, and I believe Bill mentioned this earlier, $25 million remaining. That is not available. Those, all those funds have been allocated. A significant number in here is that $12.3 million that we were able to, to pull in from the FDA for ADA repairs. So this is a lot of the, the ramps and various sidewalk improvements, just repairs to make sure that we are ADA compliant around our transit sites. And then finally, our resurfacing component. We've, we've had great success with the resurfacing component in addition to doing a lot more roads. You'll see there the total number of roads and almost 500 miles that we've been able to resurface through this program. But, but addition to those resurfacing projects, we've also been able to do a lot of crack sealing to try to extend the life of our, our pavement so that we, we can delay those resurfacings a little bit further. So trying to balance those preventative maintenance measures and those full resurfacing measures to, to extend the life and stretch the dollars as, as much as we possibly can. If you remember back to when the 2022 SPOST program was being put together, our overall condition index is on a score of zero to 100, and then we averaged that out for all of our roads, had gotten down into the 50s. We've been able to move that back up into the 60s. So we, we've seen that increase and get better. There are still more, more roads to do. Fortunately, we, we do have some, some budget here, but have, have been able to see the overall condition of our roads improve over these last few years.
Excuse me, Drew. What's the ideal benchmark for that?
Our ideal is between 65 and 70 on an overall average. And, and that we, we've found is the sweet spot. If it gets much higher than that, you're resurfacing probably too often. And then much later than that, then you're starting to look at full-depth reclamation, much more expensive pavement preservation projects. And then finally, this is a, a small snippet of, and similar to what Bill shared before about grant, grant revenue. Bill's slide was looking at just those grant revenues that have been appropriated. There are some grant revenues that are committed from our partners that have yet to be appropriated in, in some type of agreement, but, but again, have been appropriated or have been committed by them. If we look at the 2016 SPOST, just in looking at just specifically the matching funds. If you recall, in 2016, there was $50 million set aside for these matching projects. In the 22, it was 25 million. And just the, the amount that staff has been able to leverage in the 2016 SPOST has been able to leverage close to $100 million from that 50. That, that was increased to 55. And then with the first 12 and a half million, have been able to leverage an additional 50 million in the 2022 SPOST. So just from this category, and there's grant funds in other categories as well, but just this category between the two programs, $68 million has been leveraged to bring in an additional $150 million in federal and state matching funds. And that is the completion of our presentation.
Thank you, Drew. Are there any questions or comments?
Wow. That's a lot of projects that we're moving forward on. So thank you, Drew, to you and your staff for all the hard work. It does seem like it takes forever for some of these, but I know that, you know, with right-of-ways and utility relocation and all the other components that go into these major projects, it does take time. So thank you.
It does. Thank you. And on those utility relocations, when we go into construction, oftentimes we see a pole line, and we think that's one utility relocation. Inevitably, when they have to move a pole line, it's the, the power has to move, then the top fiber has to move, then the next. And if you look at those pole lines, there will be 10, 12 fibers. And each one of those is a different company that has to coordinate a crew to come out with the design and schedule that work. So, but we appreciate that. We, we do try to move them through as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Just a brief comment, and it's certainly not only directed towards you, but just all the different presentations. It's just hard to sit here and not be proud of how much each of you care, the level of professionalism, the intelligence that's always presented. It is unmatched in so many different ways. I know you're proud. And, you know, certainly a little more emotional than I wanted to be, but just thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I thought I was the only one getting goosebumps today. So to hear you say that, you captured it perfectly. It gives us tremendous pride, tremendous for your agency and all of the others that presented. I was feeling the same way, Commissioner Richardson. You captured that very well. I feel very good, especially considering all that we go through as an organization and to see us plow through this work, which provides direct benefit to our citizens. I think it's important for them to know that. It's been a while since we had these, but very important for people to see the return that they're getting for the investment that we're making through these programs.
And I'd just like to also echo to thank all of you guys. You're always professional. You're tremendous in everything that you do. We meet consistently on a monthly basis. And you anticipate what we're going to ask, and not only do you anticipate, but you come prepared with answers. So thank you all for all that you do. And, you know, our mantra in Cobb County is to expect the best, and you all always deliver. So thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
It's been a long afternoon. Thank y'all for carving out some time for, for staff. We know you see these agenda items come through and, but to actually be able to lay your eyes on, on the projects and get the updates from the department heads, we, we feel like there's value in that, not just for you, but for our residents as well. So thank you for your attention today, and thank you for your thoughtful questions and your accolades of staff.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you. Appreciate you coordinating this. Thank you to all of our staff. Thank you to our department heads, and thank you to our county manager. We'll be back here tonight at 7:00 PM for our regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Please feel free to join us. We are now adjourned.